Welcome, everybody, to the Wunneka Village Council Study Session and Special Meeting, July 8, 2025. And we'll call this meeting to order. And if you would, just mute your cell phones and other electronic devices so we don't have interruptions. Appreciate that. And I would ask Manager Bayhan to do a roll call for attendance.
Thank you. Trustee Handler?
Here.
Trustee Orsek?
Here.
Trustee Apitoff?
Here.
And President Dearborn?
Here. Trustee Myers has provided the required notice that he is unable to attend tonight's meeting due to work obligations. Our rules provide that Trustee Myers may participate remotely unless two-thirds of the board objects. Is there any objection? Hearing none, Trustee Myers may now participate remotely, fully, in the special meeting, and the minutes should so reflect.
Trustee Myers?
Here.
Great. Thank you, Scott. Why don't we have a pledge of allegiance? And I'll lead the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Terrific. We'll move to item three, public comment. And I would ask if anyone in the audience would like to speak about an item not on tonight's agenda.
Hello.
Ted?
Ted Wurczynko. So, you know, I'm back and forth. Try to be... Anyways, I try to be nicer, and then I feel like the village acts dishonorably, and I get really unhappy. And I try to get nicer again. And it's just a hard thing because, if nothing else, I am forthright, and I say what I think. And I feel that I'm honest when I'm wrong. So, today, over this last few days, I've written three letters. Two of them I sent out today. One was to the Illinois Department of Natural Resources because I really appreciate the fact that the permenee at 205 Sheridan was able to provide evidence that they are in violation of their permit, the terms of their permit. It's great. Their paid agents are representing that that's private property out over the lake, and it isn't. So, we'll see. IDNR probably won't do anything. I'm guessing money is involved. I sent another letter to the state's attorney's office, to the two assistant attorneys who apparently consulted with the village about the letter that I received from the village attorney. And I asked them, you know, in the interest of justice, I looked at what the village presented to them, and I feel that it was a misrepresentation and incomplete accounting of what was happening, and it was designed to elicit a specific response. And although I didn't quote the entire thing, you know, Berger v. U.S. from 1935, the Supreme Court was pretty clear that a prosecutor, the state's attorney, but a prosecutor isn't just like any other termite. They have a peculiar and very... They are servant of the law. The twofold aim is that guilt shall not escape or innocent suffer. And I'm asked to speak with them because I feel that the information the village provided to them was incomplete and painted a picture that the village wanted to, although it might not necessarily be accurate. And that brings me to the third letter. So, I did not send my third letter today. My third letter is, I've been doing a little bit of reading of the rules of professional conduct from the Illinois Supreme Court. And there are some rules that I think it seems pretty obvious that the village attorney have, may not have comported with, that they may have violated. Truthfulness, some other things. And so, I didn't send that letter today. I would came here today to say I would like to speak with the village attorney. We could discuss what I believe to be untruthful statements that were made, that statements that they should have known were untruthful, and perhaps find a way that we can move forward without me sending a formal complaint to the Illinois Attorney Review, whatever they call themselves, Board. So, I'll give it a week. I'll see if I hear anything. Then I'll send my letter, probably give it a week or two. And if I don't, then I'll send that third letter off. Okay?
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Trustee Myers, did you have public comment?
I do. I do. I'm stepping down as, going to take off my trustee hat and put on my Wunneka Music Fest hat, and want to publicly thank and highlight the effort of the village staff for last month's Music Fest. The fest presented, obviously, its own challenges, given the heat. But once again, the village staff kind of rose to the occasion. And it was, I think, due to not only the public safety folks, but the public works folks and all the staff that we were able to, once again, provide not only a fun, but also a safe festival. So, it, you know, it, once again, I think, you know, year after year, this is highlighting just what a great public-private partnership this is, what a great event it's become, not only for our community, but for the North Shore. And without the commitment of the village staff, from the village manager on down, you know, this wouldn't be possible. So, once again, you know, those of us who kind of have taken charge of organizing this event want to thank the village for their contribution in making this year's fest another successful one.
Thank you, Scott. Very well put. And kudos to our staff across the board. Wonderful job. Would anyone else in the audience like to make public comment? Okay, we'll close public comments, and we'll move to item four, establishment of the consent agenda.
Bob, can I just make one sort of comment after Scott?
Sure.
At the farmer's market this weekend, a woman came up, and I was talking to Sergeant Larson, and a woman came up and went on and on thanking the police department and the fire department for their presence at the Fourth of July fireworks, an event, and how that made the community feel so safe and secure. And I thought that was really nice of her to go out of her way to share that, sort of building on, you know, what Scott said about the presence at the fest.
So true. Great. Thank you, Kim. Thank you for that. It's very, very true. Back to the consent agenda, then. Does any trustee wish to remove any items on the consent agenda for a separate vote?
No.
Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the final form of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
And that's a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? No opposed. And we'll move on to the approval of the consent agenda, and we'll ask Manager Bayhan to read each item on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Approval of the village council minutes, June 3, 2025, special meeting, June 3, 2025, regular meeting, and June 10, 2025, study session. Approval of the warrant list dated June 13, 2025, through June 26, 2025, in the amount of $2,324,967. And Resolution Number R 57, 2023, excuse me, should be five, approving a Sixth Amendment to a lease agreement between the village of Wunneka and the United States Postal Service for adoption.
Okay. Thank you, Rob. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda by unanimous vote?
So moved.
Second.
And that's a roll call vote, Rob.
Trustee Handler?
Yes.
Trustee Orsek?
Yes.
Trustee Dahlman?
Yes.
Trustee Apitoff?
Yes.
Trustee Myers?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And we'll move on to item six. The matter of the meeting tonight is the budget overview. And really, our chief financial officer, Tim Sloth, will talk about alternative forms, alternate forms of revenue for the Business District Revitalization Fund. At the 2025 Budget Review Meeting, which occurred last October, Council requested that staff conduct a study session on the proposed implementation of a 1% home rule sales tax prior to the 2026 Annual Budget Planning Process. Tonight, village council will provide policy direction regarding implementing a 1% local grocery tax, a 1% home rule sales tax, and additional revenue sources. Finance Director Tim Sloth will review, and we'll move from there. Thank you, Tim.
You're welcome. Thanks, sir. Thank you. Good evening, council. So, the purpose for tonight's meeting is to gain council feedback on three policy issues in advance of the 2026 Annual Budget/5-Year CIP. The first item is the local grocery replacement tax, a home rule sales tax, and review of additional revenue options available to the village. So, the first item would be, should staff implement a 1% local grocery tax to replace lost revenue as a result of the state of Illinois repealing the statewide grocery tax? So, back in August of last year, the state took action and repealed the 1% groceries tax, which provides about $205,000 in annual revenue for the village. This was part of the budget approval process signed into law by Governor Pritzker. As part of that legislation, they adopted that the villages, the local municipalities, could enact their own local ordinances to restore this tax. This tax applies to most grocery items. For example, your regular day-to-day items of, like, listed examples, lettuce, cereal, but excludes prepared foods, alcohol, candy, soda, which are taxed at the general sales tax rate. Since the beginning of the year, over 200 Illinois municipalities have adopted the local ordinance, including North Shore communities that are moving forward, Glencoe, Northbrook, Willmet. Other North Shore communities are strongly considering the tax as well. The tax would continue to be collected and administered by the state, so there's no local collection efforts. There's no changes that the businesses have to do. They still continue to file the same sales tax form that they always have. It's just now the authority for the tax is at the local level versus the state level. And then the final note on this ordinance would be, need to be passed by October 1 to avoid a collection gap. So, you could pass it at any time. If you pass it after October 1, then you might miss out on some revenue. So, again, just to clarify, it's not an additional tax. The exact same items that are currently being taxed will continue to be taxed, and we can continue to collect the same revenue. So, if you recall, there was, in my weekly report, a few weeks ago, I provided an updated memo on this and contacted each of you to discuss it. But if you had any other questions, I can take those at this time.
Why don't we go through the presentation, Tim, and we can double back?
Sure.
Because some questions might overlap.
Okay.
Thank you.
The second policy feedback item is implementing a home rule sales tax. We're seeking feedback on implementing a 1% home rule sales tax, which would be dedicated 100% to the Business District Revitalization Fund and eliminate the $1.1 million transfer from the general fund. So, if you recall, we brought this item to council during the 2025 budget process last fall. We proposed this tax and outlined how it would replace the general fund transfer of the business district. And the council direction was to bring it back next year in a study session and provide more information. In addition to that, we were asked to provide examples of other revenue sources that are available to the village. So, in total, summary for the tax, it would generate approximately $1.5 million a year, which would provide a net increase to the Business District Fund of $400,000. And then, we would provide relief to the general fund in the form of freeing up that $1.1 million transfer. This tax requires only an ordinance to pass. There's no referendum. It applies to most retail sales, including online sales, but excludes groceries, vehicles, and prescriptions and certain medical supplies. The tax is, again, collected by the state and remitted to the village. There's no additional paperwork to the local businesses. There's no additional paperwork for the village to complete. And just a little bit of where Wunneka currently stands, our current sales tax rate, the combined rate in Wunneka is 9%. The state tax makes up 6.25% of that, and Wunneka's portion of that state tax is 1%. So, 5.25% goes to the state, 1% is collected by the state, and then remitted to Wunneka. This is in a list of area communities that have implemented a home rule sales tax. You can see the proposed Wunneka rate of 1% is in line with most of the communities. Some communities go as high as 1.75%. So, this chart shows, you know, the proposed sales tax revenue, 1.5 million, the eliminated transfer from the general fund of 1.1 million, with a net increase in funding to the business districts of $400,000 annually. And I alluded to, this would help relieve general fund expense pressure. So, to give you an idea, for 2025, we budgeted $3.5 million for capital expenditures. The average over the next four years beyond that, that's listed in the CIP, is 4.5 million. We're also see increased pressure on the general fund and the public safety pension funds, and then just general inflationary pressure. And while inflation has cooled over, you know, the last year, the CPI for 2024, which is what the tax levy is usually tied to, still was 2.9%. And just to put that, you know, as an example, we have a general fund operating budget of $26.7 million. If you were to take that 2.9, you know, directly applied, that would be approximately $775,000 in additional expenses that could potentially be due just for inflation. Moving on to the Business District Revitalization Fund, the five-year capital plan from '25 to '29 identifies $21.3 million in projects, including key projects for the Hubbard Woods Streetscape, which is currently listed at $10.9 million. The post office plaza of $8.4 million, Hubbard Woods parking structure of $900,000, EV charging stations of $695,000. And then the Indian Hill Green Bay Road Streetscape, which we listed, but we didn't have really concrete pricing at the time. We have it listed as a to-be-determined. So, that's not, that entire project's not included in that total cost of $21.3 million. And if you recall, the village has historically taken a pay-as-you-go approach to funding capital. So, we accumulate the funds, and then we start the capital project when we have the funds versus issuing debt. So, that's typically how the village has operated. So, this chart shows the cash flow. This is straight from the memo. It shows in 2025, beginning cash is about $2.8 million. You see the general fund transfer in of about $1.1 million each year. That's the stable revenue source, and you see some additional transfers for the general fund in 2025. And then, you see the expenses in terms of capital for each year listed out. And then, there's an item that we had called future funding sources of $5 million a year in 2027 and 2028. And what those sources were was potential grant opportunities that might exist that we could pursue for additional revenue within the fund. But you can see, even with those future funding sources, the fund would go negative in 2028 by 2.2 million. And without them, it would go negative in 2027. So, currently, we have cash flow through the end of 2026. That would be sufficient to complete the full design process for the post office project and the Hubbard Woods Streetscape project. But it doesn't provide enough funding to really go forward with the actual construction of those projects. So, just in summary, $21.3 million in projects, $5.5 million, I would call that secure revenue for a $15.8 million fund deficit, sufficient cash flow through 2026. Cash goes negative in 2027 without the $10 million in future funding sources. Some of those future potential funding sources include various state programs, STP, that's the Surface Transportation Program, Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program, IDOT, Jurisdictional Transfer. There's different economic development programs, and then just other miscellaneous grants. So, the grant funding, you know, obviously, we would pursue it. We've been, you know, as you know, successful in seeking various grants, particularly in the Stormwater Fund. But just, the Stormwater Grants that we received were unique in that they allowed us, they were the type of grants where we were able to proceed with a project and then go through the grant process and get reimbursed for the project that we had already completed. None of these grants that are listed would work like that. We would not be able to move forward with any of the projects. We wouldn't be able to go out to bid for any of these, any projects until we secured the full grant and approval grant. Then you could go up for bid, then you could get the funding. Some of the backend funding sources for some of these programs likely include federal funds, which we know have been at risk recently and are kind of in limbo. So, just, you know, that's what we have identified as future funding sources in the five-year CIP. So, next steps. So, if council was supportive of a 1% home rule sales tax, we would start working on a communication plan immediately in advance of the budget. That would include engaging the Chamber of Commerce, deploying the Economic Development Coordinator, and also getting the communications manager involved in drafting informational materials. We would include projected revenues from that revenue source as we build out the 2026 Annual Budget. And we'd work with legal to draft the actual resolution for formal council consideration, and we would time that introduction of that resolution with the introduction of the actual budget itself. Moving on to policy feedback item number three, additional revenue, excuse me, additional revenue options. So, we request policy feedback from council on any other revenue sources available to the village in 2026 or future years. This is more just informational to provide council with a general understanding of what's out there. So, we explore the following additional revenue options, property taxes, food and beverage, real estate, other revenue sources. And we'll just do a quick review on each one of these. And if there's any questions at the end on any individual revenue source or any of the policy feedback, we'll go there. Property tax, as you know, accounts for about 48% of general fund revenue. In 2025, or 20, I'm sorry, 2005, when the village became a home rule unit of government, we, there was a pledge made to adhere to the property tax extension limitation law, which the village has done and actually has, you know, done more than the actual, just limited. In 2025, the limit will be 2.9% or approximately $472,000. We could levy beyond the annual PTO percentage limit. There was, and still remain well under the cumulative amount. So, like I said, we're cumulative since 2005, $27.8 million under PTO. And just as a general idea, each 1% increase in levy generates approximately $160,000 in revenue for the village. Vehicle stickers, the current fee is $40, generates approximately $300,000 in annual revenue. Each $10 increase will provide $75,000 in additional revenue. Comparable municipalities charge anywhere from $50 to $85. This vehicle, this revenue source is, you know, a lot of legwork on the village. We collect it directly. There's no third-party agency that collects it on our behalf, like there is with the sales tax or the property tax. Some municipalities are actually moving away from selling stickers and increasing other taxes to offset the A food and beverage tax. This applies to prepared food and alcohol, basically food sold through restaurants. Typically, impacts restaurants, bars, cafes. A 1% tax would generate about $450,000 a year. It is widely used by many Illinois municipalities. An amusement or streaming tax. This is a newer tax. The tax applies to services like Netflix, Spotify, Xbox Live. This is a sample of Illinois communities. This is a comprehensive list, I should say, of all the Illinois communities that have implemented it. Like I said, it's fairly new. It seems like 5% seems to be the average going rate that, for Wunneka, we estimate would generate about $125,000 a year in revenue. Real estate transfer tax. Many home rule communities have a real estate transfer tax. This is a, it requires voter referendum to approve. If we assume $5 for $1,000 in valuation, that's the tax that's in place in Highland Park, Rednecca would generate 1.8 million based on actual data in 2024. Other revenue sources, we discussed, grant revenue, some that we just consider not applicable, hotel motel, cannabis, video gaming. SSA funds, you could use an SSA to fund a localized project. It could be considered for Hubbard Woods, but would raise equity concerns as we've been able to move forward with projects in other business districts without a direct SSA tax. If there was a deviation from the pay-as-you-go funding, I just did a sample, worked with Spear to see what we could look at in the current market. This was last, about two weeks ago, $10 million bond would cost about $750,000 a year at 20 years at 4.3%. So, that concludes the review of the items we seek policy feedback and the additional revenue sources.
Okay. Thank you, Tim. Obviously, that was not meant to be an upbeat conversation, just for the record. But here we are. Why don't we open up for the moment for questions amongst the trustees?
Just, so, if we were just limited to these three things, we're looking at one or the other of these, like, one or two, we're looking at all three of these?
So, yes, we would recommend...
Or at least one or two. Okay.
Number one, we recommended number two last year, and we'll recommend two again. Home rule sales tax, that would be, you know, my recommendation. Number three, I think, is more informational at this time.
Yeah.
As we go forward over the years, you know, there might be interest in some of these levers versus others.
What I would say is, one and two, I could be comfortable with, especially in light of the fact the 1% tax has already been in place, and it's just basically who's collecting it. And our neighboring communities are doing it, so it doesn't seem like it's like us coming out of left field and doing this. And two, again, it also looks like that's a pretty common thing. For three, like, I think we could increase the parking sticker, but I don't, I don't know that anybody would like to be nickel-and-dimed on, like, their Netflix account or anything like that. So, I'm glad that that's just informational at this point.
Yeah.
Can I?
Go ahead.
Right, Kim? Can I, I'll go through a few questions here, sort of in just in order of the presentation. When we looked at the current, the current sales tax rate, is that 6 1/4 for the state tax? That now includes the 1% grocery tax?
No. Well, it's 6.25. It's technically a separate tax. If you go get groceries...
So, then, we have those three plus the 1% grocery tax is what we're currently...
The grocery tax would apply instead of the sales tax. So, it's the, the state sales tax, our combined sales tax is 9%. The 1%, I guess we're...
Within that 9% now?
For sake of discussion, we could call it within. It's technically not, but then the other tax doesn't apply.
Okay. So, maybe I'll put it another way. So, if we're currently at 9%, when we would approve the grocery tax, we'd still be at 9%?
We're still at 9%.
Okay. That's just what, so, wherever it is in there, it is in there. Please remind me where the rest of the funding for the general fund comes from, if 40-some percent is coming from property taxes?
Sure. So, we have the 1% sales tax, various fees, permit fees, the vehicle license fees that we have in place, interest on investments. So, there's multiple sources of revenue that cobble together within the general fund.
Yeah. I don't have my binder in front of me here. Okay, let's see. And just to confirm, options one and two are completely to fund capital projects, whereas the items listed on option three could fund many things. Is that what we're looking at?
Correct. Option, so, yeah, option three would be, could fund anything. Option...
Could be capital. It could be...
Yeah. Number two, it was go directly into the Business District Fund, which funds capital. There are some operating expenses within the Business District Capital. And any fund, any funding mechanism within the general fund technically goes towards a whole pot of expenses.
Okay.
But we've identified that capital needs within that fund are increasing, on average, about a million a year. Not increasing a million each year, but the average was about $3.5 million. Over the next five years, it's going to be about $4.5 million.
Okay. And a little sidebar here, the Hubbard Woods Streetscape and Post Office Plaza numbers are so specific. Did we, at the time we did the budget, you must, we must have hit some pretty good estimates?
We had some preliminary numbers, and David was pretty specific about putting exact numbers within the budget document.
Trustee Handler?
Yeah.
We were, we're still working on refining the Hubbard Woods project, and these are still preliminary... And these are still preliminary, but right now it's estimated about 10.8 million for Hubbard Woods, but that does not include roadway or water mains.
Okay. Okay, and let me.
They're still being calculated.
Okay, and when we look at three, this, again, this is so conceptual at this point, but just for my information, with food and beverage tax, do we have any sense of how many restaurants in our community are charging what some restaurants call a cost of living or a service fee on top of sales tax?
I don't have that information.
You know where I'm going with that, sort of, is to have sales tax and then have some cost of living service fee and then add on a food and beverage specific tax. To trustee Oresk's point, people are a little fatigued with the nickel and diming. So that's just something I guess I'd be curious about once, if we ever got to the point, we'd be, be looking at that. And then on the amusement streaming tax, I have to say, this is a little close to home. Meaning, I just processed the amusement tax payable for the Winneka Music Festival. Because would that be, because the fest, I will tell you, pays it because the ticket partner's based in Chicago. Would this be for an event like that or any other event held here in town? Would this be on top of what they, the organization might owe for Cook County?
What was presented was specific to the streaming tax, which is a component within the amusement tax. But amusement taxes in general, you could apply to ticketed events.
So even though there's a Cook County amusement tax, there'd now be another, a Winneka amusement tax?
If you could implement an amusement tax and you can, it's my understanding, you can turn on lever, turn on and off levers, so you could apply that amusement tax to different items.
I know I'm getting really specific here, but those are the kind of things that would, I think, at one point, we'd.
You could, yeah, if you wanted, you could apply, you could pass an amusement tax and not include streaming. You could pass an amusement tax and not include, you know, ticketed events. You could have some flexible, or you could tax any amusement activity within.
Okay, so we would define how that would.
It's my understanding you could define what those items are.
That's it for me for now.
You know, I, I'm kind of glad we agonize over this stuff.
That we agonize over it all?
I wish, I wish every taxing body would agonize over this, man, we take it so personally. And we spend a heck of a lot of time figuring out, you know, it, it, as a taxpayer, I always look at this and say, I'm tired of paying for everybody's laundry list of things they want to do. Make some choices, make some hard choices, as we should. And I think this, this group has done an exceptional job, long before I got here and, and the last four or five years. You know, 27.8 million under PTO, it means we've been making hard decisions for a number of years. And we got into a point last year where the first time, but even then, we haven't taken a max levy in how many years?
Yeah, I think it's been 11 years.
11.
Which says, and I'd like to put our record up against anybody's, and this is all the other taxing bodies who regularly go to the max, unfortunately. I like the idea of specific items that we are trying to pay for it with. And I would be reluctantly, I think number one has to kind of be done. Number two, I think we're trying to go and do some very specific things to make this, this village better. I wouldn't mind if this is a five-year plan that snaps back, or at least has to be looked at again, because what happens is everybody just compounds another tax, another tax, versus saying, we have a specific five-year strategy for this money, and after that, we, we will either revisit it again or snap that tax back, because otherwise, it's just another tax into perpetuity. And we're trying to do specific things with this, you're thinking?
No, I've seen in various funding scenarios where you do have a sunset on a particular tax that you say, okay, let's review it, as you were saying, at five years, and is it still needed? And is it still earmarked or dedicated to the fund that it was intended for? So that's not unusual. One thing I would say, it was noted on page 26 of the packet in Tim's memo, where it talked about since 2019, the general fund has made additional transfers to the Business District Fund. So think about, this was the prior years to construction. So we had the $1.1 million transfer from the general fund along with another $550,000, and sometimes there's a little bit more in order to do the pay-as-you-go for the, what, seven or eight projects that we did. That also included the project down at Tala on Winneka Avenue. So as you're constructing pay-as-you-go, this is one way to accumulate some money to start to pay for these projects. The Hubbard Wood Streetscape, we don't have a firm date, but fiscal '28 is a very possible construction year. So to have two or three years of revenue generation in addition to pursuing grants may allow these to converge at the right time. The out-year might be fiscal '29. What's complicating it is the jurisdictional transfer.
How many of our surrounding communities follow the pay-as-you-go strategy?
Not many.
Not many, yeah.
Have the lowest debt throat, I'm pretty sure I can say we have the lowest debt threshold of any municipality in the North Shore. And that's only remaining general obligation debt for stormwater.
I think that's something to be proud of for us, and I guess I look at this and say, others have, in this, other taxing bodies even here have created kind of slush funds, and they've gotten criticized for it without a, and we, you know, I love the idea of having these very specific things we're going after. I understand we have depleted some of our general fund and we got to deal with that. Can't kick that can down the road, as we say. But I do think that there is, I don't know, I sleep better at night when I say, okay, these are for specific things and we're going to, we can look at sunsetting this in five years, at least have some type of, we won't continue to compound and find other ways to get, to wrestle money out of our residents if we don't have to do it. But that's my own thought.
Couple of questions, because I had the opportunity to socialize this discussion and alert the Chamber of Commerce at my meeting this morning. So one of the questions, and I think it's addressed in the memo, but I want to make sure it's clear, that there's not going to be a double tax on groceries if we, if we, we're not doing anything today, right? We're just talking about it, but if we, future case, adopted policy position one and two, that groceries would be exempt from the home rule sales tax.
That's correct.
The only question I had when I was looking at the memo, menu, I'm hungry, is this issue of prepared foods. Because prepared foods from, you know, for takeout from Corner Ban Me could be treated differently as prepared foods from the hot bar at the grand. How would that be handled?
So prepared foods, so foods for immediate consumption would be taxed under the home rule sales tax of the 1%. And technically, if you went to the grand and you bought Captain Crunch, that would be the 1% local grocery tax, that's an applicable item. But if you got something from the deli, sandwich ready to eat, that should be taxed and under the home rule sales tax.
So would the sandwich or the chicken fingers from the hot bar at the grand?
Those items are supposed to be picked up with the home rule sales tax.
But they wouldn't be at 2%? It would just be one in one category and one, so there would not be a duplicative tax?
Correct. The prepared items are excluded from the home, from the local grocery tax, but included in the home rule sales tax.
Okay, that's helpful, and I think that's a good clarification.
Are you talking like places like Marani's for takeout, or are you saying that's not considered prepared foods?
No, Marani's would be prepared food, because it's, you know, it's, it's that. I noticed, and I know we've only had preliminary discussions on this, but the Green Bay Trail improvements around Elm Street and that enhanced connection wasn't included on the five-year capital improvements. Is that because it's just too far remote?
I think we did have some money budgeted for the Green Bay Trail. We also have congressionally-directed spending allocation. Tim, you want to remind me of the amount on the?
Approximately $900,000 in congressionally-directed spending.
And that's going to be administered through the State Department of Transportation. So we would be working on a project.
With an RTA grant?
It would be, it's federal money that has been sent to the state, for the state to administer. And so when we put together that grant application, it was before we did, you know, more robust planning on the trail. So we're looking at other options as to how we can deploy that money. We're somewhat targeting the southern end of the trail for some options, but that's still in the formulation process. So that would come back this, within the next three to six months.
Oh, okay.
Could come in with the budget.
So just because it wasn't listed on possible general fund contributions, it's still on our radar, okay?
I think those listed were Business District projects. That was not all capital projects. So this would be separate, and I don't think.
There's various capital funds.
Yeah, and I just saw it, the part, you know, part of the trail that, you know, creates an enhanced access to Elm Street would be part of Business District.
Probably crosses over.
Yeah, yeah. One other thing I wanted to talk about is just helping me to understand the total tax load. Because right now, when we're taking a transfer from the general, the general fund, that's funded largely by property taxes.
About 50%.
Yeah, and so that's by every resident, you know, in the village who owns a home. Or if you rent, it's a part of your rent, I would imagine. But for commercially zoned properties, it used to be in Cook County that they are taxed at a lower assessed or a lower amount. So that, thinking about how layering on a, for option two, a Business District tax through our, you know, what would that look like? Would that, you know, because I can just anticipate some of these business owners suggesting, or property landlords suggesting that that's an unfair tax. But don't they also get a reduced value on their property tax? And so maybe this is a way to equalize between the residential property tax carrying the general fund?
So, yeah, there is a difference in how they calculate the assessed valuations between residential and business properties. I would have to look at that closer and kind of to really say how that impacts, you know, the actual real estate taxes that they're paying compared to residential's on similarly based properties. There's also state equal, I mean, there's other things that kind of go into that. So even though their, their assessed value is based on a lower rate, I think it still kind of trues up, but.
Yeah, I guess I'd just like to, maybe it's worth some additional work on that so that if you're a typical retailer in the Business District, you're looking at a potential additional 1%. You know, how does that, in preparation of that, just, you know, my gut, where I'm leading with this is my gut is, you know, it helps share the burden of the improvements to the Business District because they also pay a reduced value on their property taxes through their rental.
And it's, the 1% is passed through, so they, it's charged the end consumer. They collect it and then they remit it, and then it, you know, I guess the other advantage is that, you know, it wouldn't then necessarily be local Winneka residents. Anybody coming from other communities would then be paying towards.
Right, so the retailer pays the 1% home rule tax. Their landlord is passing through their property tax on triple net lease or any other form of lease. But their, you know, they may be, have an art, not artificially low, but their property tax that's passed through on their rent may not be the same as what, you know, somebody down the street who's in a house is paying. So that might be helpful to help people fully understand that, you know, this is, you know, potentially a tax that's going to go right back to the Business Districts and how that's going to, you know, how they understand that. And it's not just for capital improvements, right? There's a lot of things we do for the Business District, planting of flowers, those sorts of things, programming of activities that would benefit the business owners directly. Is that right? Through this proposed fund?
Correct. The Business District Fund has different activities like that. That's a small part, I mean, the vast majority of the fund is capital at this point.
And the only last thing I would talk about is I'm not necessarily a fan of special service areas, but I do work in many communities where you can achieve some, you know, very targeted projects where it may be something to think of for Hubbard Woods, because it's not, it doesn't really affect the equity, it's just capturing the increment. If there's going to be a big redevelopment project in Hubbard Woods, just like one Winneka, that increment of the increase in the property value triggered by the improvement could help fund things directly related to that, you know, that area, like the parking garage, if we want to expand it, or parking in other facilities. So if anything, it's an issue for the schools because they are deprived.
You're talking TIF or SSA?
Well, even in SSA, right? So you can, you can take that increment like a TIF and use it to, well, Bowling Brook used it to build a regional stormwater facility.
I think the way I've seen them, I understand where you're going, the way I've seen them deployed have been for, you generate, you levy that additional tax specifically for that area and it only applies to the village portion of the tax.
Yeah, it can be a separate line item. As I said, bowling, we did, we were building communities and, you know, building.
There's different ways to trigger them, but.
Yeah, you can also have it pay as you go, or you can go to bond to find the SSA. But I'm not suggesting, I'm not pushing it, but it's not like it becomes a slush fund like Chicago has, you know, it can be an important revenue source where growth is paying for the impacts of growth. But anyway, that's it.
Trustee Myers, any thoughts?
Yeah, a few things. First of all, I think I am in agreement with everybody else in terms of the grocery tax and the home rule sales tax. The grocery tax is pretty obvious, you know, it's a source of funds we've, you know, we're already depending on. And I think the home rule sales tax gets us into parity with, with other communities. You know, in terms of ideas around number three, you know, I, I agree with Rob's point that, you know, if we, if we define specific projects in a specific area, I think that's a, that's a good approach and to certainly put a checkpoint out there. I guess a couple of things that aren't on the list that, you know, might be worth spending some time thinking about. You know, our, we've really kind of shrunk the retail overlay district and really have made a considerable number of special use exceptions so that we now have quite a few services within what was the retail Business District. So, you know, we're, we're focusing on a sales tax associated with kind of retail activities in an area that has both shrunk as well as, has a lot of non-retail businesses. And I don't know whether we have thought about a tax on services or some kind of a, a business licensing fee for service businesses, you know, based on square footage or on other factors, that since those businesses in that area are going to benefit from the improvements that we are making, you know, this would be a way for them to contribute, certainly during the time while we're accumulating funds and then making the improvements. So, so something that would capture some of the, some, some revenue from these non-retail businesses, I think is something that, that we should look at and, and look at different options. You know, in terms of maybe more unusual or maybe one-time revenue sources, I think, you know, as we look at the post office site, if we go down the path of some kind of a public square, you know, I think that it's something we should look at is, is some type of a public-private partnership. You know, if we're, if we're going to create something, you know, we've got a great model down in Millennium Park with the Pritzker Pavilion. You know, is there something that would be suitable in our village where, you know, a naming right, you know, could be, could be a funding source? Obviously, none of us are interested in, you know, in a business, you know, having a Coca-Cola Plaza or anything like that. But, but is there something that matches both the, the image and, and kind of the quality of our community as well as, you know, maybe has an interest from a resident? The other, the other thing I was thinking about is I, I know at one point in the downtown master plan, when we were looking at Hubbard Woods, we were looking at the airspace above the parking lot, the Hubbard Woods parking lot. And I, having been off the board. And I, having been off the board for a couple of years, I don't know whether there's been any engineering studies on that, but certainly selling those air rights, you know, if they're conducive to some kind of a, you know, multi-unit housing project, would be another means of, of capturing some revenue that could go right back into the Hubbard Woods area. So, just a couple of other things I think to think about.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Why don't we open this up to public comment? Would anyone in the public like to comment on this agenda item? No? Okay, we'll close the public comment, bring it back here. Tim, just a couple of thoughts here. Online sales, how are online sales handled with the home rule sales tax? Is it at parity with our local retailers?
Yeah, so the 1% tax, that's the, the sales tax rate that's 1% that we currently have, any online sales that apply to that would generally apply to the home rule sales tax as well.
Okay, so if, if we go buy something online from Starbucks, it's the same 1% as Starbucks here? We buy something online from a source that's a non-retailer in Winnetka, it's 1%?
Yeah, there's a multitude of rules, there's quite the extensive flow chart, depending whether the inventory is within the state of Illinois, whether it's not, whether the business, you know, how it, how the, exactly where the sale is made, and, you know, who's buying it? It depends on who pays, you know, if it's out of state, buying from a business in Winnetka versus someone in Winnetka. But just generally speaking, without going through that entire flow chart, if the 1% currently applies to that sale, the home rule sales tax would apply as well.
Okay, well, I think that to Trustee Dolman's point on the chamber, when you go out to meet with the chamber, and I'm sure you'll do it in conjunction with Trustee Dolman, I think it's important to really have a robust presentation about how this impacts all of our retailers. I mean, I know most of us around this table, if not all of us, sort of recoil at the idea of additional layering taxes on. I mean, it's, this is, for me, very uncomfortable, but I, I also know that we're gonna, we're sort of opening up the lid on the 2026 budgeting process, which is really going to be challenging. I mean, we know that, we have an ambitious, very ambitious capital project schedule, timing-wise, over the next several years, some very big projects. We're still paying for projects that are in the pipeline, and we have some grant issues, significant grant issues, that we're going to have to figure out. If the grants don't come through, how do we cover, you know, some of these obligations that we are absolutely committed to? I think we, the comments are on the table here, I think we do need to be creative, be thinking about this, because we want to achieve these projects that are in the pipeline, we would like to accomplish that, but we are also mindful about maintaining our financial strength. I mean, I know the general fund, and I don't have the figures in front of me, but over the past 10 years, the general fund, I think when I came in, it was, I don't know, $30 million in the general fund or something like that, and we're down to 16 or 15 or some, you know, I mean, it's, and part of that is stormwater. I mean, we have, you know, we've been paying for, for a very important project here. So, I think that we want to maintain our financial strength, increase it, so we have to be creative. I think Trustee Dolman mentioned some, Trustee Myers mentioned some ideas, we should be looking at all these, for sure. But this is, this is just a prelude to what I think we're all going to be facing in four or five months. And so, with that, it, and I know you're looking for council feedback, and you're getting it. I think if I look around the room here, the grocery tax, the 1%, are we committed to moving on with that? Scott, committed to moving on with that, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, that would probably come back through an ordinance next week?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Is that right?
Yep.
Okay, so that would be on the agenda next week? I think that's good. The home rule sales tax, I, I view this as something that is, has an appetite around the table, it sounds like. However, I think we need to flush it out some more. I think the commitment to the business district, I think that's legitimate, for sure, but I think we need to, I mean, I don't know, but is, I don't know that the group is committed right now to a 1% home rule sales tax, or we're committed to continue this exploration and, and communication with our retailers, with our, our commercial district.
Yeah, I, I think, I mean, I think in fairness, it's something that I'm committed to, but I also want to make sure that the business, the businesses, the landlords, you know, everybody has had an opportunity to, we go out and we sit down with them, because obviously, you know, they just heard about it this morning, the chamber, so.
Yeah. I think that's important.
I think it's important that there's given time, but I, you know, I like the fact that there's dedicated funds to the business district, and it does, you know, we've been funding that through the general fund, and as Tim said, it has the opportunity for all the people coming to Winnetka to visit our wonderful restaurants and businesses that they can help share.
Yeah, visitors helping with the sales.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, the, you know, in the end here, we're going to come together in October, and this will be part of the, assuming the communications go well, and we'll hear about that along the way, but, you know, that will be part of the budget process at that time. We're not going to be passing anything in advance.
Yep.
No, not in advance, but I think, let me, can I throw out a suggestion? I think, as Tim noted, we would begin the public engagement with the chamber and then communication pieces. I would recommend that we take July, August, and September to do that engagement. We'll begin planning the budget with the 1%, but we'll also have a contingency plan if there's significant backlash and you feel like you want to hold back. But keep in mind that if that funding source isn't there, that capital plan's going to look a lot different.
All right, absolutely.
You know, and, and if I could just throw in a question here, a comment, suggestion, that as we go, I, I agree, we shouldn't pass anything, you know, before the budget.
No.
We should spend this time to communicate with the business community, but I think as part of that communication, I think it's fair for us to raise this question that this is a tax on retailers, and there are many people in the business district who aren't out retailers, right? They're, they're not restaurants, they're, they're, they're not selling a product. You know, how, how do, how do those businesses that are carrying this burden feel about some people in the business district who are kind of getting a free ride? And what, what ideas do they have? I think having a dialogue and having, getting some input on this question is something that would benefit us, you know, come October.
And, and some of these service businesses aren't just service businesses, they also sell product.
Yeah, but a lot of them don't.
I understand, but they're, it's not one or the other, it can be both.
Right, but, you know, I'm thinking of some physical therapy, you know, places that may sell once a week, you know, but-
Yeah. Tim, is that something you can look into?
Yeah, we can look into it.
In terms of the scope of our business district that would not fall under the home rule sales tax, and what kind of businesses those are, and what our alternatives are? I think we should, we should look at that.
Yeah, yeah.
That would be great.
Well, and, and, you know, there's many people who are running service businesses out of their homes, right? And so, that, that becomes a gray area. Are we just talking about services that are registered in the business district? I think those are things we have to explore and think about.
Okay.
Okay. Is, Tim, do you have the policy direction that you need from us at this point?
Yeah, I believe we have that.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation.
Yeah, and just for, if we were to approve the home rule sales tax, it would be part of the budget, and then it would come after the, as the budget's being approved, that's when that ordinance would be approved. Is that what you're suggesting, Tim?
I was suggesting, so we would do the, the all-day council review, I think we have it towards the end of October, and then typically after that, we might have a follow-up, and then we do the public hearing, and that's where we introduce all the rate resolutions. And if at that time, there was support to move forward with the, the sales tax, we would intro, I would propose introducing the sales tax resolution as well.
In December.
Okay, so the grocery tax would be in ordinance next week?
Yeah.
The home rule sales tax would be via resolution?
Would be in ordinance.
That would be, yeah, as part of the budget process, after having that all-day review, you know, with the public hearing, when we introduce all our, the rate resolutions for the utility fees, the permit fees.
Okay, through a resolution, yeah.
Introduce the tax levy, the whole, you know, we would do, we, I would propose doing it at that time.
Yeah, so the sequence would be engagement, budget, and then fees and taxes going.
And, and Tim, how is the home rule sales tax, you may have gone through this, collected? Do we, is that administratively on our?
No, that's through the state.
That's all through the state? So, again, it's all through the state, remitted to the village of Winnetka?
Yep, so the state, the business owners would still complete their monthly, I think it's the ST-1 form that they complete for sales tax, it's the same form, they would just, I think there's a different section that-
Okay, good.
And I would say, as feedback, not to keep talking about this, once I talked about the information you provided about our surrounding municipalities, and that this would not put them at a disadvantage, you know, to businesses or restaurants, for instance, in Woolmette or Glenview or Northbrook. That resonated.
Mm-hmm.
So, I think that's an important component, and I think Glen Co., you were mentioning, Rob, just recently became home rule, and Steve Gutierrez was sitting next to me, and he, I think they're indicating that they may do the same as well.
Yeah.
So.
What?
Do the same.
A sales tax.
A sales tax.
I don't, I don't want to speak for Glen Co., but I think that comparative, you know, competitive advantage issue is important to address.
You know, as we get creative too, I'd love to look for opportunities or ways to tax people other than our own retailers and residents, like, I mean, it's, we probably get sued, I mean, but I look at the army of Amazon trucks and FedEx and UPS trucks, almost like a road tax, because, I mean, they're thousands and thousands and thousands a day.
Your residents won't be happy about it.
Well, I mean, just something small, I mean, not on the residents, but on the actual companies.
They'll pay it.
Yeah, they may. But it's usage.
Okay.
So, trying to find other ways.
We need to be creative, we need to think creatively here. Okay. All right, we'll close item six of the agenda, go on item seven, closed session. May have a motion to adjourn to closed session for the purpose of discussing specific personnel and reviewing closed session minutes to section 2C-1 and 2C-21 of the Open Meetings Act. Under the motion, when we adjourn the closed session, this special meeting will automatically and immediately adjourn without the conduct of any further business or comments. May I have that motion?
Second.
Second.
And that's a roll call vote.
Yes. Trustee Apitoff?
Yes.
Trustee Orsek?
Yes.
Trustee Handler?
Yes.
Trustee Myers?
Yes.
Trustee Dolman?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. We're going to close session.